Good evening and welcome. I'm Councilmember Chris Ray, and I will be chairing this evening's meeting. I'm going to call the September 12th, 2023 City Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee to order. With me this evening is Councilmember Barbara D. Michelle, Deputy Council President Zach Hall, has an excused absence and will not be with us this evening. So we have a few things on the agenda this evening. We're going to do public comment, and then we have two agenda items, ID 1456 Sewer Master Plan and ID 1525, the Intelligent Transportation System Draft Plan. First on the agenda is public comment, so members of the public may address the council this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance may make comments when we called first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you're joined by a computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. The option may vary depending upon your device. If you're in the room and have not signed up, I will ask for speakers for closing this part of the meeting. There will also be another public comment opportunity following council committee questions on each agenda item. So, Clark, has anyone signed up to make their public comment this evening?
Yeah, Ray, no one has signed up previously, and we have no virtual attendees at this moment.
I'm crushed. Anybody in the room want to make public comment? No, okay, then we're gonna, we're gonna move on. If, when we get to the, each of the agenda items, someone does want to make public comment, I'll read through the rules. But let's get on with our agenda this evening, and first thing is the approval of the minutes from our July 11th meeting. If there are any objections or comments on the minutes?
No.
All right, without objection, we will approve the minutes from July 11th. Moving on to our first agenda item, which is ID 1456, the sewer master plan. Matt Ellis, Utilities Engineering Manager, will be presenting, and we will turn it over
Thank you, councilmembers. Matt Ellis, Utility Engineering Manager, and we're presenting on the sewer master plan and specifically on some policy questions. The purpose is to provide an update on the sewer master plan and discuss all policy statements under development within the sewer master plan. So we have three policy statements. The first is the transition of onsite subject systems to city sewers, to the city sewer system, and this was already discussed with mobility and infrastructure in February, will not be discussed tonight. The other elements, which we will be discussing tonight, include maintaining sewer capacity with two policy topics, inflow and infiltration capacity impacts and developer capacity impacts. We will also discuss policy on our fats, oils, and grease for our fog program management. So the two, the direction we will need tonight is on maintaining sewer system capacity regarding inflow and infiltration capacity impacts. Does the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee agree with an INI capacity impact threshold? And for part two, does the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee agree with the developer contributions based on amount of flow contributing to surcharge? And then for policy three, fats, oils, and grease management, does the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee agree with a retroactive clause for installing a grease interceptor? So we'll briefly go through a timeline and the background for the master plan, provide a overview of the master plan to date. We'll go through the policies that we will be discussing. We will not be talking about the onsite subject system revisions. I apologize for that being on there. We will be talking about surcharging capacity protocol, CIP development to date, and then the fog policy and the promising. Here's our timeline. We are here today presenting on our proposed policy. In October, we will be completing the master plan, including chapters and presenting red lines to code to mobility and infrastructure. We'll also be submitting CEPA documents. In November, after consulting, consolidating comments, we plan to submit the draft master plan to King County neighboring jurisdictions and ecology for concurrent review. This process may take some time, and our original goal was to adapt, adopt the master plan by the end of the year, but in reality, the review by external agencies may delay formal adoption until we receive concurrence and address any lingering comments. So under this current plan, we are, we will adopt the official master plan in the first quarter of 2024. A little bit of background, the city of Visacua's sewer master plan was last updated in 2002. We've grown from a town of 11,000 people to about 40,000 residents, including mixed use and a large commercial district. Large sections of the city were either built or incorporated since the last sewer master plan was developed. We were in desperate need of, to evaluate our system. One of the first steps was creating a new master plan, was calibrating our hydraulic model. This allowed us to determine how certain demands impacted our system, as well as evaluate the effect of intrusion and infiltration commonly referred to as INI add-on system. This is where storm, surface, or groundwater unintentionally enters the sewer system. INI has major impacts on sewer capacity and create environmental concerns if a large connection is identified and creates costly downstream treatment, which is managed by King County. All sewer systems have INI, and the goal is to effectively but economically manage and reduce the amount of INI entering the source. Work included installing of flow meters and identifying flows and calibrating and recalibrating the model. Finally, we set about identifying a storm, and we felt that we felt our system should be able to handle. As a first step, we provided our consultant with our GIS system and a series of record drawings to update the model. We then installed a series of flow meters. We set about calibrating our model using recently determined water system demands from the water system master. We checked pipe slopes and evaluated the system. This developed our, our dry weather conditions. We made sure the meters were in place for a series of storm events so we could check the performance during major storm events. We had two 10-year storm events during the period that we had this in place. So this is our current sewer system. Our pipes are in maroon, and the Smamish Plateau Water District's boundary is in gray. We have about 88 miles of conveyance pipe and four sewer lift stations. We do not provide treatment within the city. We currently convey wastewater to King County wastewater transmission, through King County wastewater transmission mains to a regional PIGMA facility. We have calibrated our model to design storm and identified areas where we suspect inflow infiltration to be currently occurring. We also evaluated future growth and demands and evaluated issues with capacity leaks and how that will impact the environment. All this was help, work helped influence the CIP Capital Improvement Plan that was recently adopted. Here again is the basin map, and it shows our system broken out by basin. The blue and green pipes in the image were the pipes we modeled, and we realized it would not be cost-effective to insert every pipe in the city into the model. We focused on truck mains and mains that serve a large population. So that boils down to our first policy statement, and that's surcharge. The image on the screen is basically the worst-case scenario where sewer is coming out of the manhole. This is not in the city, this is a stock quota. And so when is it an issue? We had to evaluate the surcharge performance criteria. We didn't want sewer to ever back up out of a manhole during a current or future conditions or during a storm event. We wanted to make sure INI in our system was a measurable amount that our system could handle. There's no way we can effectively remove all INI entering the sewer system. So we evaluated the system. We wanted to, wanted to be good stewards, but not expend funds to search out every last impact of INI on this. This could cost millions of dollars to wreck. We want our, our system to function properly. We understand that some stormwater will enter the system, and the amount that enters is in line with best practices, county thresholds, and neighboring jurisdictions. In that regard, we looked at critical facilities in areas that we are seeing a lot of INI So we have, we have especially concern about our lift station performance during storm events and how INI, INI impacts those pumps, make sure that they're not getting inundated and that they function properly to reduce wear and tear and extend life performance. Finally, we have a goal to reduce the amount of stormwater entering the King Counties. One of our first orders of, let's see. One of our first orders of business was determine the size of the storm event that our system could handle, knowing that some INI could, could come into the system. The King County has a 20-year storm event as calibration. We elected to do similar, and our design storm is between a 20- and 25-year storm, theoretical storm event, but it's based on an actual 20, February 2022 storm. This is based on rain gauge data. We felt using an actual storm was a useful metric to make sure our system could manage large storm events and not based on theoretical data. So it boils down to a policy statement and maintaining our sewer. This is, the city has two distinct geographic features that we, we needed to account for when considering this policy. We have the shallow valley floor, where sewer lines are typically flat and, and located very shallow below the surface. In these areas, it's important that we monitor INI entering our system and have stringent protocol for either reducing the INI or upsizing pipe. Backup or surcharging in shallow pipes means that there is more risk of sewer backing up into manholes and potentially coming out of the top and creating a health hazard. This is roughly half the city. The other areas are on mountainsides, where sewer lines are on steep grades and can be oftentimes are deeper. In these areas, it's not as important where we have strict requirements because if sewer does back up into a sewer line or corresponding manhole, pipe is so deep, it would be less of a concern. Additionally, it would be exceedingly expensive to replace pipe. Here's an image of a storm event that, for a certain section of pipe in our system. Gray is our normal diurnal use of a section of, of day and night. Blue is a storm in question. As you can see, we observed a lot of storm surface and groundwater entering this. This is, this is the worst location that we found in. Not all our pipe segments look like this. This is basically how we model the system and determine areas to focus on for our CIP development.
Okay, Matt, can I ask you a quick question about this graph?
Sure, yes.
So I actually had this question, like, what's the INI as a percentage of normal flow, and it looked like it's pretty, during a big event, it's pretty substantial.
Yes.
What's our capacity? Is there a capacity line you can draw across on this graph?
I took it out of this graph, the, the, the presentation, but it is backing up into the manhole at this location, and it's pretty close to the surface.
Okay.
Most locations, it's not.
So when we have that kind of a storm, we, we run the risk of having some overflow?
We evaluated up to the 100-year storm, and we weren't surcharging out of the top, but we were, we were getting pretty close to that. So our protocol is two times the depth of the pipe in a flat location. I'm sorry, one height of the pipe. So basically, we don't want it to get into the manholes, the flat, flat parts in the valley, and then in the deep, deep, or steep areas, we allow it to go twice the height of a pipe, if that makes sense.
Yeah, because it won't overflow.
Yeah.
At that point, but down in the valley where, where we're not very deep.
We're gonna be a little more strict.
Yeah, okay.
As I mentioned, we are proposing two different thresholds for investigating and upsizing repairing pipe segments to improve capacity. Our plan is to include upgrades to segments of pipe that meet the thresholds in this case. We allow backup into manholes during storm events, then deep pipes, but not in shallow pipes during storm event. Plan to be proactive in upsizing for shallow pipes and more lenient for the deeper, the deeper pipes. On hills and deeper segments, we allow for more INI during storm event. This allows us to balance costs for upsizing with other improvements for our sewer system. The alternative to this is to have one threshold. Basically, if sewer exceeds the volume of pipe during a storm event, we correct the issue, no matter where the pipe is located. This could ultimately mean our system has more capacity and reduce the amount of storm water. It would be much more expensive to implement. Staff did not pursue this option because it would create more capital projects, place more of a burden on the city sewer fund, alleviate a concern that wasn't, in our opinion, Unfortunately, the CIP had been developed before the master plan could be. Based on the proposed policy, we evaluated for current demands and future growth scenarios and the CIP correlation. We had an, we, we had to assume a degradation over time, meaning our system will contribute more INI in the future. Existing pipes and manholes in our system are not maintained. We're using the county standard to 7% increase in INI entering the sewer system per decade. The good news is we have a pretty healthy sewer system. Based on the above criteria, criteria, we have only one section of pipe that we added to the CIP for investigation. This section of pipe is located behind Fish Hatchery and on Newport Way. This is the pipes, pipe segment that I showed in the previous. It is now, since it's now in the CIP, we've allocated funds to investigate the problem and alleviate the issue. Our goal is to investigate upstream sewer connections to see if we find a reason for the INI. Reducing the source of INI is the most cost-effective solution. If we can't pinpoint the issue, we will consider upsizing the pipe segment to.
A couple more questions for you.
Yeah.
If you don't mind me kind of getting as we go, but one of them is, so as the pipes get older, they're more porous, and that's why we get INI because water can seep into them. Is that kind of the source of that?
That's some of it. Sometimes it's settlement. Sometimes it could be development has, you know, another pipe has come in close to that sewer line, and, and so there's bad connections. It could be a whole list of things, and so we do have a, a annual maintenance program that's part of the CIP to maintain both our manholes as well as our pipes. Sometimes that means lining the sewer pipes. We've been doing that in the South Lakes Mamish neighborhoods lately for the last five years, just because those pipes are pretty old, and they're all concrete pipes, so they, they have more of a tendency that allow more water to come in. Also, high groundwater, which.
Even worse. Do we also find that over time, the pipes, the capacity of pipes degrades over time also?
Uh, not as much, because again, that was more based on demand. So we looked at it from a demand scenario of, I think it was a 2040, with the growth escalation based on the water system master plan assumptions we made there, plus double checking with our, with our long-range planner.
Great, thank you.
This leads to policy section 2B, developer capacity. We want to make, we want to make sure under future scenarios that if a large development is constructed, course funding pipe is evaluated. Under this policy, developers would be required to analyze the impacts of the development on the existing sewer system. If model development is determined to create a surcharge issue for a pipe segment outlined in the root, the first part of the policy, a developer will need to contribute improvements within the city's infrastructure. This is for large private development. This does not pertain to single-family home renovations or minor construction. And here is the table. If a modeled pipe segment is subject to surcharging and developer plans to connect to the pipe segment, then financial participation for improvement is supposed to be. If surcharging is occurring and the planned development contributes less than 10% of the flow to the pipe, they are not responsible for upsizing the main. However, if the planned development contributes over 80% of the flow to a pipe segment resulting in surcharge, they're responsible for 100% of the. We don't have explicit examples of this in our, in this city or in others, but this is similar to stormwater evaluation, and we want to make sure that the growth pays for growth and improvements to the city system is paid for by the responsible parties, not ratepayers, a significant contributor of waste added to. So our question to the board tonight is, do you concur with this policy statement requiring developers to support sewer upsizing? They contribute a measurable amount of. And as we go down, as I previously, previously said, the CIP was adopted before completion of the map. We identified critical, critical infrastructure to evaluate, such as our existing lift station. We included select sewer extensions into the current, into currently unsuared neighborhoods located within the 100-year floodplain and within shoreline buffers, based on past Environmental Board and Mobility and Infrastructure discussion, and we included areas of high surge. So here are the four projects in the CIP that were based on the very preliminary master plan. Here's how we are going to implement them over the next five years. That includes the Upper Sycamore Extension, Highlands Lift Station Improvements, South Newport Wildwood Sewer Remediation, that's the one I showed earlier, and the Highlands Infiltration.
Can you just say two sentences about each one, kind of what it is, where it is?
Sure. The Upper Sycamore Extension is extending sewer into the Sycamore neighborhood that has historically not had sewer, and we're focusing that extension into, onto areas that are within the floodplain, right next to the creek. The Highlands Lift Station improvements is, is basically improvements to the sewer lift station up in the Highlands. South Newport and Wildwood Sewer remediation is basically improving the capacity of that sewer pipe behind the Fish Hatchery or, or trying to alleviate the INI. And then the Highlands Infiltration Intrusion, we identified some INI up in the Highlands, so it's kind of broad spectrum, and that's. That leads to fats, oils, and grease.
Matt, one more question from, of course, the councilmember Michelle.
Yes. Could you just go into a little bit more detail about how we will determine the percentage of developer participation? Is that going to be after the pipes are installed and then we measure it, or is it before the development's been approved? Where, where in the development process is this going to be applied with the developer?
That's a good question. It would be during the proposal for the development. So basically, they come in with a plan, they're going to have a high-rise or a larger apartment complex, and they would have to connect to our existing sewers. So it's not their pipe that we're evaluating, where it's looking at the city's sewer main just downstream to see if it is needing to be upsized.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
That's oils and grease. As part of the sewer master plan, we also took a look at our fog program. We completed a gap analysis and identified one area of concern that is currently not addressed in our city. This does not impact the CIP, but will have impact on businesses around. Businesses contributing fog to the city's sewer system have appropriate grease interceptors installed as our best management practices, and this became a requirement in the city in 2014 when the fog program was last. However, we found a gap in our current code that we need to resolve. Although all new grease, new grease, grease-generated establishments are required to install grease interceptors, a few existing restaurants in town are still operating without interception. Due to their longevity as is at a single location and being grandfathered in, we're moving into a space where the previous tenant didn't have a suitable interception. Unregulated fats, oils, and grease entering the system, the system has created blockages in the city sewer system, which has created problems for downstream customers, including sewage backups inside downstream establishments. We are pursuing a retroactive clause for grease interception installation. This would have a financial burden on a few existing establishments. We believe between 10 and 14 establishments would be impacted by it. We're proposing requiring these establishments to install a grease interceptor where one currently isn't. Retroactive clause would require existing business owners to actively manage outfalls of the sewer in line with other business establishments. A retroactive clause would be in alignment with neighboring jurisdictions. Typically, neighboring jurisdictions have instituted a retroactive clause between six months, one year, and as high as three years for businesses in line. Requiring a grease interceptor varies depending on the size and type of interceptor installed. It depends on the amount of grease producing it. The actual sizing and price needs to be completed by a licensed mechanic here. Work also requires a plumbing. All said and done, the cost for an interceptor and permit would most likely be $3,000 to $8,000 for a standard restaurant. As staff evaluated this, we came to the conclusion that businesses are just coming out of COVID. This requirement would be a financial burden and requires permitting and engineering. With that in mind, six months to one year may be too short for require establishments to install a grease interceptor, but two to three years would be ideal to allow businesses to budget for this, solicit quotes, and install them. So we did bring this to the Environmental Board in July. The Environmental Board agreed with the surcharging protocol and developer contributions and had no comments on this topic. They also generally agreed with the addition of a retroactive clause, the IMC 1638 regarding the fog regulate. At the meeting, there was one recommendation for a one-year window for business. There was also discussion on who should be responsible for payment, either the tenant, business owner, or the property owner. There's more internal discussion to be had on that last point. The grease interceptor were installed outside establishment, should be the property owner's responsibility, as it would be a benefit to the property, no matter what type of tenant comes in in the future, and would be a larger, a larger-sized facility to accommodate a variety. Installed inside, it would be the business owner's responsibility. The size for the specific business, meaning the tenant moves out, the grease interceptor may not be sized correctly for the next tenant. Currently, staff does not have a recommendation on this. There are many complicated contract requirements between tenants and property owners. Regardless of this element, reports an extended timeline for implementation. And we did have a second code revision that we originally presented to the Environmental Board, that we would require mobile food vendors and food and beverage establishments, including food trucks and freestanding coffee stands, to develop and submit a gray water management. If not managed properly, gray water or other waste streams can be discharged to the storm system and/or surface water. We had this originally as a policy we were proposing, but after discussion with the Environmental Board, we learned there are regional discussions on the subject matter that may influence how we address this issue. We also, we are also about to implement an asset management program within this. We are interested in how this can support this effort. From an environmental standpoint, there is need to implement this program and policy. We want to table the topic until the in-house resources are in line, and we learn how this is managed from the region.
Hey, Matt, just kind of going back to the.
Yes.
The fog filters. Have we had any conversations with local business owners about their, their thinking on this, what their preferences are, if they have any insights?
We have not.
Matt, when, when you say one recommendation for a one-year installation, was that one person?
That was one person.
Oh, okay. And so the rest of the Environmental Board liked the staff recommendation? Is that what, is that what this is implying?
They liked the recommendation of a retroactive clause, but there was no, that was, that was the only direction that we provided, we were provided was one recommendation.
Oh, okay.
Again, here are the, the direction needed is the policy two, maintaining sewer capacity. Two A, inflow and infiltration capacity impact. Does the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee agree with the INI capacity impact? And then two B, developer capacity impact. Does the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee agree with the developer contribution based on amount of flow contributing to charge? And then policy three, does the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee agree with a retroactive clause for installing it? I apologize, I do have one year on there, but I think we are, staff is recommending three years.
All right. Councilmember Michelle, any additional questions? I kind of interrupted you as we went, so I'm pretty satisfied. So we are now at another public comment opportunity. Clark, is there anybody online who is pressed interest in making public comment at this time?
Chair Ray, we do have an online attendee. I don't see a hand raised at this point.
Okay.
Online to.
I have a hand in the room, though. Come on up to the, the lectern, state your name, relationship to the city, and be sure.
My name is Catherine Kirkendall. I recently moved here from Northern California, where I fled from war fires the size of LA and lost my son, my father, and my daughter. I have brothers up here and lived here before in Redmond and was moving here. Right as soon as I got to King County, my U-Haul was stolen and I was attacked. And I had a counselor because of what happened in California, and I was paying for neurofeedback therapy, which is, I think, why my counselor and my doctor say I have the best coping skills they've ever seen. But because I didn't have furniture, I got a studio in Seattle. It was a nightmare, ODs, I've never seen anything like it. I just didn't know the neighborhood I was moving into. So I got out here to Issaquah, I'm a health food cook at the Medina Country Club and at PCC. I just got moved into this whole nightmare of what's happened in my life, life, those things at you. It's how you get through it, is how my outlook is. But I moved into a place in Issaquah, and the sewage is coming up, it's been doing that for a year. The water is coming out, they're not, and I don't know who. I figured this was the right place to find out, and I can wait till after the meeting to see where I can get resources, somebody to help. They just act like it's my fault. They won't even give me my deposit till I move. I go, but I'm not even really moved in. And I got an $11,000 loan to get moved here, plus all the other, you know, just... So I'm looking for resources to help me. This has been on for two and a half months. I lost two months' worth of wages. And I'm at a point where I just kind of need help navigating through this and also maybe trying to find an attorney. I've tried all the other resources for two months, and even the insurance people aren't helping me. They just, they tell me one thing, and then the next day it's a different story. They're very dishonest, and maybe because there's so many disasters in the world. But that's all, and I don't know when the appropriate time is to talk about this. I figured this is the right place to get resources, sewage and water. And you're talking right about the neighborhood I live in, right there at Creekside, right above the... And they have water just going right into the hatchery, and I didn't know. I did call the city and let them know that their waters, they're pumping it out from under their building into the driveway, all the gas and toxins, it's going right a few feet above the... Afterwards, if someone could direct me where I could get help and resources and maybe get the owners, I can't even get the owners to help her fix this.
Great. Thank you so much. If the city administrator will leave it in your capable hands. No, I'm not. I'm going to leave it in Public Works' hands. Great. Thank you. All right. Any other comments? I'm not seeing anybody here, so we're going to move on and give Matt some guidance. So we got two policy questions, maintain the sewer capacity and then also the fat, oil, and grease management. Barbara, you want to start us off?
So question number one, on the I/INI capacity impact threshold. You know, I will be honest, I don't know if I know enough about the science to really comment on that, but it sounds good. And so, and it sounds like you've done a lot of preliminary work that's been very, very good, and we've gotten good data from it. So yes, let's go ahead with that. On the second one, yes, absolutely, the developer contributions based on the amount of flow. And thanks for the further explanation about how that would be determined. And then on the last one, I think the two to three-year, unless we feel like it's an emergency or, you know, when we get those big clogs in the sewer system, I understand that that costs us money and time, and we have to clear those. And so, but on the other hand, these, I think, what you're describing is long-term businesses that have been here in Issaquah for a number of years, and this will be something of a surprise to them. So I think two- to three-year retroactive clause would be appropriate. As you say, these restaurants are coming out of COVID, they're just getting back on their feet again. And even though business looks like it's very, very good right now, we don't know what's coming down the pike either. So I think the two- to three-year period would be good. So that's, those are my comments.
Thank you. I'm pretty much in alignment. I think the first one, the INI capacity impacts, I think it's very smart to separate the flat from the slopes, because we do have a finite amount of money. Let's focus it where we make a biggest difference. So I think that's very smart. And clearly, if we're getting a development that's going to make a significant impact on our capacity, asking them to pay their share, fair share is absolutely appropriate. I agree, I'm going to say I don't disagree, which is like agreeing, because it's double negative, on the one, or the two- to three-year on the FOG traps. But I would like us to reach out to the business community, at least the ones we think will be impacted, and get a sense of what they're, where they're at. They may have a different point of view, but I'm not opposed to a longer period of waiting. Because I agree, this is a difficult time, and we're just getting back on our feet after COVID. So, but based on their feedback, I were kind of making a point with it. But looks great, Matt, team, awesome. Anything else? All right. Thank you. We're going to move on then. Thank you. This is always so riveting to do sewer system. I mean, I'm just honored that we get to do it. So we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is ID 1525, one of my favorites, intelligent transportation system. We have the draft plan, and it's going to be presented by the director of Public Works, Emily Moon. So Emily, welcome.
Good evening. Happy to be here. This is a big moment, big moment, as Chair Ray has eagerly anticipated. I am very happy to be talking about the ITS plan. First, before we start, I would like, let's see if my slides actually... There we go. I would like to say thank you to Buddy System that I brought with me this evening. We have had many, many people on staff and consultants and other subject matter experts help us in designing this plan. This plan has been in development as a focal point and concentrated effort for over a year. But as council members know, a lot of precursors to the plan's actual development, many years beyond that. So I wanted to say thanks to the team. We have a few people here tonight. We have members from our Public Works engineering team. We have IT folks here that have helped with the plan. And we have our super subject matter expert, our senior signal tech as well. So thank you all for all your hard work putting this together. It was an excellent collaboration. This, like the sewer master plan, was way overdue. Another plan that was 20-plus years old. So that's another reason why I'm happy to be here, to finally be able to say we're going to communicate how we're going to take our intelligent transportation system into the next era. So the question before you tonight is, do you agree with how the plan has been shaped? And do you have any desires to make, direct us to make any changes to the plan before you can recommend it to the full council for acceptance? I want to talk a little bit about just what this plan is. I've defined ITS for you. I will be saying ITS as we go, because otherwise it's very long. Term, intelligent transportation systems. So this plan is wholly focused on our technology, hardware and software, and the data that we get from using that technology and the resources and the practices that we have in place to manage that system. And that's all in an effort to improve our traffic flow, reduce traffic delays, and also increase safety in our transportation system. The ITS world, though, is vast and always changing as we learn more. So we wanted to express that to you in terms of it being a universe of things, many possibilities that we could invest in, that we could implement, technology, equipment, policies, and procedures. And so a big effort in this plan was to just look at that landscape and think about what might work here, what seems appropriate for our needs in this community. And that landscape, as I said, is always changing, and we have to keep that in mind as we review this plan, as we talk about its implementation over the years. Technology is always evolving. We will need to be nimble in execution of this plan, but also in how we refine it as we go. There's no predefined path to the outcomes that we are seeking. There are probably numerous opportunities for us to get there, and I think that's a great thing. It's a great thing. The ITS plan took that whole universe and refined the options available to us based on our criteria, which we'll talk about a little bit later. We boiled it down to a collection of actions, projects, policies, procedures, practices that we could choose among to collect and use our data to further our transportation system objectives. Then we further refined into the CIP, and we described a plan for the next six years. We applied that first layer of implementation planning. What might be feasible in the next six years? What can we get done? What can we get done in a given year? What can we get done in the span of six? What funding resources might we have? And how do we need to think about the sequencing of these projects? And lastly, we refined even further, got down to the budget, the biannual budget. And that is where we implement the first two years of the CIP. We established the resources for implementation, and we set the biannual work plan. So we took the universe, we boiled it down to about 50 original projects, and then we further refined into about 26 that are in the ITS plan. And then there are 12 pluses, I'll talk about the pluses, that are in the CIP right now. And then lastly, you see this little inject for concurrency. And the concurrency policy update will help inform the ITS plan. That update will include some discussion and decisions that will help us understand a little bit better how we should situate the hierarchy of policies and projects in the plan. And just a couple of examples of that are a couple of technologies and techniques called leading pedestrian interval and our transit signal prioritization. You'll hear me talk about those projects probably again, too. Performance measurement was one of the topics we discussed the last time that I was here to talk about ITS. With so many options available to us, we have to also be mindful of those choices being constrained to time, resources, money, and that environment constantly changing, evolving. We're going to have to be strategic about where we spend our money and which technologies we lean into. We also have a long implementation period, and so we have many opportunities to be able to evaluate over time how well we are doing and to correct if we need to add different layers, et cetera. So we're dedicated to making sure that we have strong performance measures for this program, and we'll be evaluating the return on investment as we make future decisions about implementation of these projects. On this slide, I've said that we're going to measure performance at the project level, and that is appropriate, not only to look at it as a whole, but at the project level, because again, we will have choices after each project. And each project is standalone in nature to some degree, connected in another degree. So each project will be aligned with a subset of the objectives from the plan. So not every project corresponds to every objective in the plan, but we want to be really deliberate about saying, this is what we're trying to achieve with this particular project. So we're going to assess if those targeted outcomes are achieved by those projects as we go. And I can give you some examples of some performance measures. We talked about a few of these last time. But some of the things we intend to measure are the efficient use of our infrastructure. We have some multimodal goals. We need to get better at being able to quantify that. Safety measures, such as number of collisions, red light running, near misses are examples of those. System reliability is really important to us. Percentage of equipment that's replaced according to its lifecycle as an example of that. Travel times, efficiency of travel, I could go on and on. Lots of opportunities to measure how well these projects are helping us achieve our outcomes. And then lastly, we have some pilot projects. We want to make sure that as this technology is changing, that it's working for us the way that we thought it would. We have projects in the CIP or in the ITS plan that may be years out. Technology is going to change as we get there. We may need to try a few along the way before we settle on the piece that is going to work with all the other things that we're implementing. So that's why we have set up this opportunity for performance measurement in terms of pilot projects. Our project timeline, we are nearing the finish line. I will just comment on this slide that on box number two, between October 2022 and March 2023, we were before this committee and the Transportation Advisory Board talking about core components of the plan. Those core components were the ITS plan goals, the objectives, the top objectives, the priority objectives, and our proposed approach to implementation, and therefore their priority projects. Our hope is that we'll be back before city council in October, if you're happy with the plan. We're going to talk to TAB one more time before we come back to the full council. But our hope is that we can get the plan accepted so that we can move forward with implementation both through the CIP and the operating budget. I'm not going to read you these slides, but we have a mission statement for the plan. We are focused on many high-level objectives, such as improving health, safety, security, movement of people, and so on. This is not dissimilar to what you see in some of our other mobility or transportation plans. The difference here is the focus on technology. This plan is really about the technology and the data that we get from the system. Our plan components include six goals. First is improve the safety of the transportation system. Second is improve the efficiency and sustainability of the transportation system. The third is to provide traveler information to help inform route and mode choice. And the fourth is to plan and deploy cost-efficient and effective ITS technology. The fifth is to integrate city ITS efforts with regional partners. And the sixth is monitor transportation performance measures and utilize this information to improve safety and efficiency of the transportation system. Our plan, being a data-driven plan, has a lot of charts and graphs. We have done a significant body of work trying to get our infrastructure loaded into our GIS system. And so this is just one example of how we are now able to graphically depict some elements of our ITS infrastructure. This is our communications network, but we also show a bunch of different assets for the ITS plan. Our signal controllers, where we have timing plans, signal cabinets, detection equipment. Our signal controllers, where we have timing plans, signal cabinets, detection equipment, pedestrian crossing equipment, emergency vehicle preemption, traffic cameras, dynamic messaging signs, safety technologies such as school zone flashers, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, R R F Bs, you'll hear me say that again, and driver feedback signs. This one in particular is our communications network. Here's just another example where we have our cameras and our dynamic message signs or our D M S, important tool for our community. Another example of how data is represented in the plan. This is a table of our field devices, some of those I rattled off, just a way of showing you that we spent quite a bit of time cataloging, what do we have, where is it, and thinking through the life cycles and replacement needs for this infrastructure. The plan also includes some thoughts about staffing. What do we need in order to implement these projects and to keep up with our current inventory's needs, the replacement, the repairs? The plan articulates a need for 2.5 additional F T Es to implement what you see in the I T S plan. We will have future conversations with council about resourcing. We're not doing that tonight, but I think it's an important part of our discussion about these comprehensive plans to talk about what will it take to implement. And so staff has spent quite a bit of time thinking about what resources they might need in order to take on additional projects or to keep up with our current inventory needs. The staffing plan also includes a recommendation for two reclassifications, which we will be pursuing the next few months and as we approach next year's budget. This graphic shows up in the plan a couple of times. We are in the performed state. This is the way that we operate right now. We're trying to move all the way over to optimize. So the performed state means that right now, we are very focused on operations and maintenance activities in a reactive fashion, very ad hoc, get out there, fix that thing. We want to move further to the right to managed via this plan, where we are making some deliberate decisions that are based on data, where we can monitor the system, where we can act earlier because we see problems coming, and we are able to test some solutions. Have some plans and some strategic processes. And then lastly, goal is to get to optimize, where we'll be really data-driven, proactively managing the system and leveraging resources and partners. We've talked about our implementation approach. I'm not going to spend much time on that tonight. We talked about that in advance of prioritizing the projects for the C I P. So you know that our near-term effort is going to be heavily focused on building that readiness. We need to build the foundation that we can then add additional new technology on top of. So we're going to be spending quite a bit of time over the next couple of years at least, working on annual equipment upgrades, replacing equipment that has reached the end of its life, and also working on policies, procedures, creating a detailed communications network plan that will design the network for what we need in order to bring it to that next advanced level. Also, our annual upgrade program, I just wanted to add that we did add a new signal tech position this summer. That was a position that council authorized in the springtime in order to help us with this debt that we had on our infrastructure. And also, council gave approval for some new replacement programs in the C I P. There are 26 I T S projects in this plan that have unique identifying numbers. I say that because the I T S project numbers are not synonymous with the C I P project numbers. That can create a little bit of confusion, but we tried to crosswalk them a bit in the plan so that you could see that connectivity. Not all of the I T S projects are included in the C I P. Again, that's because it's constrained to the six years. There's the reality of funding that comes into play. But also, some of the I T S projects are located in current or future operating budgets. Some may be dependent on earlier projects, so we'll incorporate them into the C I P when they're ready to go. Some hinge on policy decisions that we mentioned with our concurrency policy update. Some have also been collapsed and consolidated into a single C I P project, and then others are out there in the future and will be recommended when we get to that point. These are the projects that are in the C I P. There are 12 plus. The plus is the R R F B replacement program. We've had a lot of debate about whether to call that an I T S project or not. Different people see it different ways. Eventually, there will be no discussion on that point because hopefully we will get to a place where we have R R F Bs that have a little bit more intelligence than the ones that we have today. But we, as staff, do consider it part of our transportation system, our mobility system, and so that is included. The replacement program for the R R F Bs is in the C I P. In addition to the capital projects, the I T S plan spells out some policies, other plans, memorandums of understanding that are recommended over the next few years, and I've listed a few examples of those. And then lastly, there's a little discussion on funding, ever-changing landscape on funding. But the operating budget currently has about $1.25 million dedicated in labor, equipment, and materials that is put toward our I T S infrastructure. Our C I P has a variety of funding sources, too. Right now, what's named in the C I P for these projects includes the TBD sales tax. It's been proposed, general fund funding source, and undetermined, right? That's usually what we see for those later years in the plan. And then lastly, grants are available, and our consultant had a little bit of discussion at the end of the plan about the types of grants that may be available to our projects. We've been fortunate to receive some really good feedback as we were in development on this plan. Largely, we have heard from everyone that we've spoken to that there is an understanding, a support for our focus on those near-term foundational efforts to build our readiness, agreement that the projects that we had proposed were aligned with the goals that were described in the plan, and that we should make an effort to get to the optimized state, make the investments, was one of the things I think Chair Ray even said last time, and a desire to have staff keep our Transportation Advisory Board and the City Council engaged on those future policy questions so that we can continue to stay flexible, adjust our plan as needed. I also wanted to mention that two committee members, at least, last time, said, don't forget security, system security. We want to see that in the plan. It may not have jumped out at you, so I want to speak to that. There's always a bit of caution when we start talking about system security in our plans, but I want to verbalize that we are committed to that. We talk about it often. We are in the process of developing additional policies. I T in particular has been heavily involved in the effort to make sure that our hardware and software is up to snuff. I'm going to give you a few examples of work that has been completed. So in 2023, all I T S devices are now in a firewall network. Seems like step one of security, and so they're separate from other city networks. Also this year, we restricted remote access to I T S devices, another key component of ensuring some security for the system. There are other examples of work that we completed this year. I'm going to give you a couple ideas of things that we are targeting in 2024. We are targeting enforcement of those network access controls to prevent unknown devices. You probably get those pop-up messages anytime you log on from a different device. We will have something similar to ensure that our network is not connecting with anyone who shouldn't be. And then we will also be reviewing all I T S applications and further hardening of them in 2024. We have a list of activities that are all geared around enhancing security. It is a focal point. It's embedded in the projects and practices that we have. So next steps are to dialogue with the Transportation Advisory Board in a couple weeks and ensure that they have no further changes to the plan. They know that their responsibility was largely around the big picture elements, and so now, just as we're doing with you, we're showing the whole. But most of the work that has been done over the last few months since we last spoke just was focused on those technical aspects of the plan. And then we hope to be back before the City Council in October for acceptance. So with that question that we had for you is, do you desire any changes to the plan at this time? Or are you ready to recommend its acceptance to the City Council?
All right, thanks. Councilmember DeMichele, any questions at this point? I have a couple, so I will rattle them off. So you listed the MOU with WashDOT. Is that something that they're amenable to and that we can reasonably move forward with? I mean, that could, it's just that SR 900 is a big arterial and IA 90 is a bigger arterial, and those are theirs. So that's, I was wondering how that process was going.
Yeah, yeah. I believe that they are.
Okay.
The, we will have to see the details, of course, of that, but I will say that we have had a significant amount of dialogue with them on some other matters, and I feel like there's a little bit more willingness to partner with the city on a bunch of fronts, so I'm hopeful.
Cool. So you mentioned that this I T S technology is fairly dynamic and evolving really fast, and we'll have a hard time kind of projecting what's out there. But are you thinking about how we stay current with this evolving technology and how we, going forward, evolve the plan, say, wow, here's the new, the newest, latest, greatest? Does that fit into our vision? And if so, how do we do that? And how do we stay on top of the technology? Because it's, it's, it's only going to accelerate, not slow down.
Yes, yes. A bunch of different ways. I think we can stay informed and engaged on that front. We pride ourselves in taking advantage of regional resources, national opportunities for training, connectivity, so it's reading, it's attending conferences, trainings, it's talking with our colleagues in other places. So that's a, that's a piece of it. We also engage with other subject matter experts or consultants about future projects. We've left, I think, a few projects open to not name a particular make model of a technology. So I think we will not be locked in, and we'll have that flexibility to change as we, as we learn, as we go.
Anything else, Barb? All right, we have another opportunity for public comment. I'll start with the room. Anybody in the room interested in making comment today? No? Okay. Anybody online expressed an interest in public comment at this time?
Chair Ray, we currently have no virtual attendees.
All right, I guess that's a no. All right, then let's, let's move on to our kind of directional statements, and I'm going to pick on you again.
When there's only two of us, it's pretty hard not to be the first person to comment. You know, in our last community survey, we heard once again from our community that transportation and the smooth flow of traffic was, if it's not their first priority, it's very close, and the whole field of transportation is a top concern for our community. So, so first of all, commend the staff and for being very proactive and getting this plan after, what, 14, 16, 18 years, whatever it was, back on the table and really doing the hard work to get it up and ready to go. We saw what happened when the technology and some of our equipment simply got out of, you know, out of sync, and we had no plan for how to, how to bring ourselves back up. So this is really exciting. Emily and I were talking on the way in here about the fact that our traffic is back to pre-pandemic in some cases. I think it's worse than pre-pandemic. This took me the longest time to get down from the plateau to this meeting tonight. So this is very, very needed, and I think this plan is going to set us up for success. And so, yes, I do think that we're ready to take it in front of the full council for approval so that we can start to move forward. The only comment I would add is that I will bet that most people in this squad don't know that we have an intelligent transportation system. And so when we get this, when we start moving forward on this, let's think about how do we tell this good story to the community and that what they are concerned about, we are working on, that we are really taking this seriously, we're putting some investment into improving the efficiency of our transportation system, especially as, as this traffic situation gets worse and worse, so that they do know that we are working on it and that things are happening, whether they can actually see a lot of it or not. Same thing with the Metro Flex. As we, as we get into that, we need to really communicate that, again, we heard you, we listened to you, and here's something that we're doing about it. So, but I really think that you've done a wonderful job of pulling this plan together, and I don't have any major changes or even minor changes to it. So let's take it to the full council, and I, I think it's, we usually talk about whether it should go on consent agenda or the full agenda. I think it's something we need to talk about fully with the full council. I would expect that it will be received very favorably, but I still think it would be better on the full agenda than on the consent agenda. So those are my comments.
Great, thanks. So is it an item for adoption, acceptance by the council then? Is that the plan?
Yes.
Okay. I agree with you, by the way.
Oh, good.
On that, on that one. But I tried not to wordsmith, but it was one I just couldn't help myself, and it's on the mission statement. And it's improve the safety, health, and security in movement of goods, people, and services. I think people come before goods. So, you know, it's, you know, anyway, it just hit me as I read it. So that's my, my one and only wordsmith. So at a conceptual level, you know, I think this is really clear. I'm really excited about this. It's something, I don't know, this is my sixth year. I've wanted to see for at least six years and probably didn't know it existed before that, but I think this is really something that we need to do. And to Councilmember DeMichele's point, the community is hungry for anything we can do to move people through the city more effectively, and this is one of the few really viable tools we have to do that. So bravo on this. I'm also excited because it's going to generate a wealth of data that help you to make that transition from being essentially a reactive organization into, you know, up that maturity scale into an optimized one, and I think that is very exciting, both from a traffic flow perspective, but also, and maybe more importantly, from a safety perspective. So that's, that's exciting to me. I like, oh, that's what I just said, never mind, I was going to say that again. So my, I have two concerns, and these are kind of the looking forward things. One is, we've got a lot of investing to do to get caught up because we developed a lot of technical debt over the last X number of years. of technical debt over the last X number of years. So I'm happy to make that investment so that we can take the next step forward, but I need someone to promise that we won't let this happen again and that we will continue to invest in this so that we stay current and that we are pushing the envelope because I think this is really a critical thing for the long-term health of our community. And then, maybe just because emergency management is top of mind right now, but I appreciate the work that's been done around security and hardening access to the intelligent transportation system, but I think it's something that needs to be included also in the emergency management plan, that if somehow we were to be compromised, that we've got a plan for what the heck we're going to do, because the chaos that you could create if you took over our signaling system would be, you know, not maybe as bad as taking down the sewer system, which would be worse, but it would be kind of catastrophic. I guess that was my timer to stop talking. But I'm really excited about the plan, wholly supported. I like the approach of laying out the long-term vision and then carving it up into the C I P six-year vision and then the five things for the current budget cycle. So let's get going. Let's stop talking. Let's get going. All right. Anything else you need from us?
No, thank you very much for your comments.
All right. Well, that brings us to our last agenda item, which is any announcements. Councilmember DeMichele, do you have any announcements?
Yeah, this one's for Andrea Snyder. I just wanted to share, if you haven't heard, that the city of Paris, France banned electric scooters. So, following up on previous conversations. And then, when I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership, met with both the other two regional partnerships, the North and the South, and we all met at the Puget Sound Regional Council, and we heard about their climate action plan and their plans for electrification of the metro's fleet. And the question was raised, is Metro looking at e-bikes as a solution to that last-mile conundrum? And the answer to that question was a robust yes. So I just thought we might keep our eyes on that, maybe instead of the electric scooters. Sorry, Andrew, that's the good news, and then there's the bad news. So, anyway, so it was a really interesting response to the question, because I thought they were going to say, what? And they said, oh, no, we've been talking about that for a while now. So, anyway, let's keep our eyes on that, all right? That is my sharing for tonight.
Well, I appreciate that, and I had read about Paris, too, and I thought that was kind of interesting about the scooters. All right, well, we have no further business, so we are adjourned at 7:44. Good night.